Test, test, test.
Test on two, okay. Welcome, everybody, to the City Call, City Hall Council Chambers. Today's date is November 27, 2023. The time is 5:30 PM. The address is 10 West State Street. We're televising this and I will call our regular City Council meeting to order. Would those able join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and liberty.
Roll call, please.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Kel?
Here.
Wadihoff?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Very good, full house, and time to read the proviso, which is something like this. Members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda during this time. The speaker shall approach the mic, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes unless I authorize more. Direct your comments to the mayor and council as a whole, and the mayor and councilors shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public at this time, and no action may be taken on those items in order that we comply with the open meetings laws. For those of you who are betting whether I would forget again or not, no, I'm actually going to say the mic is open, but that's because our city administrator reminded me to do that tonight. Anybody likes to approach? Yeah, thank you, Joe. Anybody want to approach the open mic? Okay, I don't see anybody standing up or running up to the front, so let's go on to mayor, council, and administrator comments. First, let me, are there any members of the staff who are here to be presented with certificates, or should I just read those?
You can just read them.
Okay. We'd like to celebrate Marlene Eggleston, who's been with the library for five years, Eugene Singliff, who's been with Water Pollution Control for 15 years, and Ellen Yowds, who's also been with the library, and for her term of service now, it's 10 years. Time now for any council administrator or mayor comments. Any councilors have any comments tonight?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
I would just like to note the passing of Tim Hilligas. He was a longtime firefighter here in Marshalltown. I'm sure I speak for everyone in the room that our hearts go out to their family and the Most Sound Fire Department. He was well-liked, and he served several years of service.
Thank you. Anyone else up here? Minister Gaughan? And I don't have any either. I need to go to Coriden tonight because I have a jury trial starting tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, and it's all the way down to the Missouri border. So, no, I don't know if there's any Monday night football to watch, but I do need to get on the road here. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Wadihoff?
Yes.
Very good, that has carried, and on to resolutions. What's our first one of those?
I'm going to read the consent agenda.
Yeah, I usually do that, don't I? You can kick me from this side, too.
Approve the minutes for the November 13, 2023 meeting in the bill list, the amount of $3,580,372.65. Approve the June 2023 financial statements. Resolution 2023-236, accepting the grant agreement with the State of Iowa Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau, State and Community Highway Safety Grant Contract Period October 1, 2023 to September 30, 2024. Resolution 2023-237, accepting the grant agreement with the State of Iowa Department of Justice Victim Assistance Section Stop Violence Against Women Formula Grant Contract Period October 1, 2023 to September 30, 2024. Resolution 2023-238, approving an agreement for tobacco enforcement services between the City of Marshalltown, Iowa and the Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division. State of Iowa created pursuant to Chapter 28E.12 of the Iowa Code. Resolution 2023-239, accepting bid and authorizing the purchase of a Skid Turner for the price of $19,000 from Kumia Ag for the use at the compost and declaring certain property surplus for disposal thereof. Resolution 2023-240, approving the fiscal year 23 annual urban renewal report for the City of Marshalltown. Resolution 2023-241, transferring funds for the fiscal year 2023 through June 30, 2023.
Very good, thank you. Now on to item G, resolutions, the first one of which is what?
Resolution 2023-242, accepting bid and authorizing the award of contract for the Peterson Park Improvements Project, number PRK22005, in the City of Marshalltown, Iowa, in the amount of $44,425.82 to Brothers Concrete.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Very good discussion.
Jeff Hubbard, Park and Rock Director. Bids were a little bit higher than we expected, but a couple of ones were really high, so with this award to Brothers Concrete, they're the ones who are doing Kiwanis Park. I'm very happy with the work they've done so far with the concrete, and this is probably a third of the concrete work that Peter, or that Kiwanis has. So with this $44,000, we will still have enough money to put in the shelter and do everything else we were going to do with the project, so we'll still come in under budget.
Are you still planning a shelter house?
Yes, 12 by 12, so that part of this work will be pouring the pad for it, and I've already reached out to Brothers because they're doing the same shelter that's at Kiwanis, and they're going to be giving me a quote to install the one at Peterson, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments up here? Any public comment about this one? Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Wadihoff?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good, carried as well. Next resolution.
Resolution 2023-243, calling a special election on setting the terms and effective date for ballot issue of proposed change in the use of 1% local option sales and service tax.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you. Very second?
Second.
Discussion on this one. Yes, this is something we had in a discussion item that kind of hit on a little bit. A committee of staff and council members met back before I arrived and discussed what the future percentages should be and what they've proposed and what's in this resolution is 75% to the property tax relief, 25% to council-designated. As I mentioned in the discussion a little bit, the council-designated is kind of, when I hear people say that, it's like they're saying bad words. And I just want to clarify that a little bit, that the first part, the property tax relief, it's going directly to paying debt and keeping the debt service levy down. Our finance director is doing a good job of that and is adamant that we keep that going that way, and it's very important. The other part, you know, when you talk about council-designated, it's not just waiting for a rainy day, it's balancing the budget. Sales tax needs to be used to complement property tax in our operating budget. One of the things you've heard me talk a little bit about, and we get brought up quite a little bit, is can we do more residential street maintenance? Well, in my mind, that's where that would come from, if there's any place at all, and we'll find out if there is in this next budget cycle. And then I do agree with saving some for when things come up, and I've looked at the list recently, and there's not anything on there that I say is, you know, that was really bad spending. It's good, and it's spreading it around the community, so I do think all of those are important. I just think maybe we need to educate the community a little more, and as we go into this budget process, perhaps use it a little more in that process as well. That's all I have. Thank you. Any comments or questions by the councilors? You have, go ahead.
I don't like the idea of lowering the amount that goes to the property tax relief. I mean, you're taking away what the idea was for to have it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions by the council before we call for a public comment?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
I need to second what Councilman Hoop said. Since we now have the revenue generating traffic cameras, I guess I'd like to see this 100% property tax relief with the stipulation that 100% of it go to property tax relief instead of, you know, holding some back every year, that we empty the pool every year and raise it to 100%. And I'm curious to hear what other people have to say, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else up here?
My question would be, what are the exact dollar amounts that we're talking to compare that, the 25 or 23% or 22% versus what it is now, so we know dollar amounts to see how that was affected?
So for fiscal year 23, we brought in about $4 million in local option sales tax, so 75% of that would be $3 million going to property tax relief.
So what I'm hearing is by the cameras would not come even, would maybe half that, right?
Mike, are the cameras about half that?
When I did that, I counted a half a million, you know, and that's maybe pushing it a little bit.
That's cap on the traffic cameras, so there'd be a big deficit on that, is what I see.
I suspect some of us think that's probably going to lower as time goes on and people like me get the ticket and have to pay it.
Have you learned?
I did. First, I was doing it on purpose, I didn't get one, then when I wasn't trying, I got one.
Okay, we're talking about two different things. So local option sales tax is $4 million. The automated traffic enforcement cameras is a different revenue stream? Yeah.
Right, we understand that.
Okay.
But one question was about applying the revenue stream from the one to the other, and some of that's committed.
Okay.
Are there council comments or questions? Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, public comment, public comment. I'm in too big a hurry, sorry, Doris.
I understand, Mayor. Doris Connect, 2020 Catalina Place, Marshalltown, Iowa. I'm glad I got a chance to come up here and talk to you guys about this. 2017 was an interesting year for me. It was, and I guess that was the last time that this was actually voted on, so if I did vote, I'd like to rescind my vote at that point? Too late? Okay. Anyway, so with this, as we are expanding from 78 down to 75 for property tax relief and increasing the, whatever you want to call this fund, from 22 to 25%, I agree with Councilman Thompson and with also Councilman Hoop that property tax is the most important thing, because something that happened to me in 2017 changed my life forever, and I got a divorce, and that meant that I didn't have the finances that I did have in 2016. My finances were cut in half because of that. So, and another thing that I think is very important is the fact that according to this, you want to have a no sunset on this, and I don't like that idea either. I think an amendment needs to be made, there should be a date to sunset, otherwise you're having a forever tax. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The mic is still open? Roll call.
Wadihoff?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Okay, that one carried as well. On to the next resolution, who unable?
Resolution 2023-244, authorizing and certification of Code of Iowa 403.19, tax increment financing indebtedness to the county auditor for each urban renewal area with the City of Marshalltown for fiscal year '25.
Move for approval.
Second. Discussion.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Just going to pull these reports up here for you. Okay, so for each urban renewal area, these reports are standardized for the state, so it talks about what new debt we're going to put on. So for the east side, which is urban renewal area number two, we're going to add city administrative staff time for $800, and the Marshalltown Development Agreement, $105,000, which you approved several meetings ago when we did annual appropriations. So that's the new debt that we're putting on the east side. Menards will also be included for payment. They do not have an annual appropriation clause in their contract, so that's why it wasn't listed on the front page. For those, we just put the full amount at the time that we certify. So is there any questions on urban renewal area two?
Any council questions? Public questions or comments? Roll call.
I have to go through all the other urban renewal areas?
Shouldn't have brought the caffeinated tea, should I?
What?
Yeah.
Okay. So urban renewal area three, which is the retail, which we consider the south side of town, for that new debt, we are adding the Marshall area Chamber of Commerce for $100,000 per year. We're adding city staff time at $1,000. We're adding McFarlane Clinic at $260,000. And so what we'll ask the county for is $100,000 for the chamber, $631,000 and $33,000 for bond payments that are related to TIF, McFarlane Clinic, Marshall Gamm, Hawkeye Hotels for $98,000, and administrative staff time. So if you have any questions, just speak up, otherwise I'll just keep going. Urban renewal area four, which is downtown. We have lots of new things here. We have Flint Hills Developer Agreement for $210,000, Willard Hopkins for $91,133, the MCBD Incentive Grant Program for facades and code upgrade for $50,000, and the MCBD operational funding for $50,000. We have the Regalado Development Agreement. We'll ask for money, but that was already 100% certified two years ago, so we're not requesting new debt there. Betty's Properties, which is the new pharmacy, $16,000, a Dorsey and Whitney legal bill for $8,200, and city administrative time for $8,000. So that's our new debt. And then we also have bond payments we need to make related to TIF projects, legal bills, and the development agreements, MCBD, and staff administrative time. So urban renewal area five is just all zeros, but the county likes us to submit it anyway, just so they know we're accounting for it, that we haven't slipped through the cracks. So that's all zeros. Urban renewal area six includes Glenwood, Marshalltown, and so we are requesting new money for a rebate on that, $23,000. money for a rebate on that, $23,000. So this has a low to moderate income percentage. So of that $23,000, $13,609 would actually go to Glenwood. The rest would be kept by the city in our LMI fund, and then we could use it for whatever purpose we wanted to related to low to moderate income properties. And last but not least, urban renewal area number seven includes Carl of Marshalltown, which is the car dealership. We had a legal bill we need to add on to our debt and then pay for that. So any questions on any of this?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Diana, go back to number four.
Okay.
Did I hear $8,000 for the city administrator? Can you refresh my memory why that's there?
It's not city administrator, it's staff time.
Staff time. $8,000?
Well, when you think about TIF development agreements, filling out the urban renewal area, calculating all these benefits, making payments, we keep track of our time, but...
Is there a reason that's not spread evenly over the, all the areas?
Well, urban renewal area number four by far has more, a lot more activity than the other ones. Like urban renewal two is just kind of on, just on, you know, the regular pace. Not too much new has been coming up for that. But there is some administrative staff time in some of the other ones as well. We won't spend it unless we use it, so we track our time on our timesheet related to those costs.
Anyone else up here?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I want to add a couple of things on here that, going through these for the first time with Diana and looking at some of it. I think as a city, we use TIF very well, kind of across the board. One thing I've noticed in a lot of these, we almost always give 100%. And you can, in Iowa, look at it a little bit and determine, is it 100? Is it, sometimes it can be more than, more than 100. We've got a couple of these projects that I think that's been the case, where they can pull from the district more, and I think that's good. A couple of things coming up, or really just one thing to note. One concern I had on the pharmacy is really it's adding almost a year early in my mind. They're not quite on the increment. And again, you approved that. I just want to make sure that, and we need to do it, but that was something that I don't know that I'd want to bring you very often, and that, but we know what our downtown looked like, and we know it was important and was necessary. And then another one, just the Glenwood housing, we'll be seeing an amendment coming on that one. There, it's kind of interesting with housing agreements. You put them together for 10 years, and you write them like you assume everything's going to be built in year one. That never happens, and so you come back, and you can do a five-year amendment. I think back, the very first TIF amendment I ever did in my career as a city administrator was on a housing development very similar to this. So we'll be bringing that back to you before long. But otherwise, I think we're using TIF very well, and like Diana said, in a lot of different ways. And some districts are more hectic than others, but hopefully we'll continue to see that development.
Any other council comment before we open the mic to the public? Mic is open. Nobody jumping up or calling in, so let's call the roll on this one.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Wadihoff.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Kerry, thank you.
Next resolution.
Resolution 2023 to 45, to approve the annual financial report for fiscal year '23.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thanks. There's a second.
Second.
Thanks. Discussion.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. I think this is big enough so people can see. Okay, this report summarizes our actual revenue and expenditure activity for fiscal year '23, which ended last June. It also shows the amended budget that was updated and approved by council in May of 2023. This is a cash basis report. The audit report or comprehensive annual financial report that we will bring to you later, probably in February or March, is an accrual basis. The reason we use cash basis on this report is because we budget that way. So this first page is scheduled to be published in the paper tomorrow. This report is due to the state auditor by December 1st and is filed electronically. The first page here is a summary of all the other pages behind it. So I kind of just wanted to go over a few things. So the top half is revenues, some significant revenues this year. We did finally get our proceeds from the FEMA Draco project, over $5 million. We got $2 million from the American Rescue Plan. We got $4.1 million from local option sales tax, $3.8 million from road use tax, and $2.4 million from the federal housing lid and Section 8 grants. So the bottom half is on expenditures. So you will notice that all of our expenditures came in lower than what was budgeted. So that's very good. We like to see that, and it's actually a requirement that anytime we're going to go over, we need to do a budget amendment. Transfers in always equal transfers out, so those are just shifting between funds. And on the agenda today, you had the final transfers for fiscal year '23, another agenda I did want to tell you that we originally had budgeted to use $288,000 from ARPA funds into our general fund for our deficit. We only ended up needing $87,000. So that's good, too. So I know there's a lot of information on here. It's a standard form that we see every year, so if you have any questions, please contact me. I'll be happy to answer.
Or ask them now.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
So Diana, we have $200,000 plus or minus in unused ARPA funds?
Yes.
Is that all that's remaining from ARPA? And what is the deadline to use that?
It has to be obligated by the end of December of 2024, which means contractually, if you need agreements via, if you're going to use them for construction type items, the contract needs to be signed. We are also using it for impact. ARPA funds are being used for the impact contract.
But we set that amount, didn't we?
It's budgeted in there, yeah.
So this $200,000, it would be the only amount that's unbudgeted at this time?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions or comments by the council? Any public comment? Roll call on this one.
Kel.
Yes.
Wadihoff.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
That resolution carried as well. Next one.
Resolution 2023 to 46, authorizing and approving a loan agreement providing for the issuance of $9,840,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2023, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same.
Move for approval. Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on this one. We could just get you a chair up here.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Yes, last time I brought what the bids were. This is just a formality we need to go through, so just need you to approve it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Well, she's still nearly up there. Any comments by the public? Roll call on this one.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Wadihoff.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
That resolution carried as well. On to item H, ordinances. What's our first one of the three of those?
Ordinance 15077, to amend the Code of Ordnances, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, by amending Chapter 77, parking schedules, Schedule 2, no parking any time, and Schedule 7, snow removal, parking prohibited, second reading.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion.
Good evening, Heather Thomas, Public Works. This is the second reading of the item that was brought forward this last time regarding parking along State Street for the six blocks that are under construction. We divide that into about three different sections. The east section is completely open. The west section is anticipated to be open mid-December. There may be some small closures next year as they work on sidewalks, and then the center section will be closed next year. The items in front of you are for no parking on the north side of those six blocks, and then no parking during snow removal operations on the south side. And I'll open it up to any questions.
Are there any? Any public comment? Roll call on this one.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Wadihoff.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Okay, that carried. I misspoke when I said there were three ordinances. This is, there's a 1.1 that suggests there might be a motion to...
Your Honor, I'd make the motion to waive the third reading.
Thank you. Is there a second to that one?
Second.
Let's just call the roll.
Kel.
Yes.
Wadihoff.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Wadihoff.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
That resolution carried as well. On to item H, ordinances. What's our first one of the three of those?
Ordinance 15077, to amend the Code of Ordnances, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, by amending Chapter 77, parking schedules, Schedule 2, no parking any time, and Schedule 7, snow removal, parking prohibited, second reading.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Good evening, Heather Thomas, Public Works. So the ordinance in front of you is very similar to what came before you in the September discussion timeframe. Since then, in early November, we had another get-together with all of the licensed haulers in Marshalltown, in addition to four council members and several staff members. The proposed changes from what we discussed last time can be summarized by making sure that new haulers would now be bringing their applications to you guys for approval and not having that done with city staff. That gives you guys a little bit more ability to control the number of licensed haulers in town, so we are recommending that change. We are recommending a change that was brought about from a public comment item, having the garbage be required to be removed one time per week. They asked for some lenience. We have one out of the four haulers that do offer a lesser frequency of pickup, so we made that correction in our ordinance. We also added a section in there allowing one-time large pickups. So if they had a mattress or something like that, they would have the ability to contract with their licensed hauler or another garbage hauler that's a one-time pickup person. They would be restricted to only have that outside for 12 hours prior to the scheduled pickup time. We also added some more details in there about the placement of the toters, which would be allowed curbside. We included not restricting sidewalk, making sure that that remained open. We also added a section in there about snow removal and it being the property owner's responsibility to remove the snow around the garbage can to provide that access for the haulers. And then lastly, we made a little bit of streamlining and reduced the amount of verbiage related to the recycling containers in the enforcement sections. But other than that, it's as we discussed last time, that hauler-provided toters would be allowed curbside. We're going to call this Phase 1 of the ordinance implementation, meaning that the two out of the four licensed haulers that we currently have are considering doing curbside. They would be allowed to do so at their current schedule. The others would be allowed to continue picking up at the houses. We have discussed a Phase 2 of this, which we'd be bringing back to you at a later date, working with those two that are interested in doing curbside to do more of a, this section of town is this day of the week when they are curbside pickup, but that would be coming back to you at a different later date. So I'd open that up for additional questions.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to ask a clarification on what our council manual says, that an ordinance can come back if there's substantial, substantial changes. And as long as this ordinance is, there's not a lot of changes. I compared the discussion one from September. We voted this down in October, right or wrong, for whatever reason. I don't think there's enough change here to allow us legally to bring this back this year. There's just some verbiage changing, a couple things added. It's a pretty long ordinance. I don't think that constitutes a substantial change in the, in the ordinance. So I guess I'm asking for clarification on this.
Alicia, I'd ask for clarification, too. I believe, I thought that this was tabled and not voted down.
Your Honor, on October 9th, it was voted down 7-0.
That's correct.
Well, it's the first reading, so my suggestion would be we see if it passes, and that would give time between the first reading and second reading and third reading to have somebody challenge whether it passes muster on that test. You know, I spend my world in, my professional world in an area where we try to define reasonable. And so what's substantial is about the same thing. Again, because I'm not legal counsel, I'm not going to give any legal advice about this one. My personal view of it was that there was enough work put into it to make enough changes that it would qualify personally. I don't know, Joe, do you have any difference of opinion about that?
I just want to add, I remember that night, there was some discussion on what should happen. And the clarity that at least that I had was that we were to continue to work on it with the garbage haulers, which is what we did. There weren't a lot of changes, which kind of surprised me a little bit, but that meeting went very well. It was good discussion, and really, it was because of the garbage haulers, there wasn't much substantial changes. As Heather mentioned, probably the biggest substantial change would be that this would need to be, new haulers would need to be considered by the council, which was a concern I had, that we would just keep adding haulers without process. So that's probably the biggest change.
Your Honor, I'm not saying we don't look at this. I'm just saying by our own council manual, we need to wait till after the first of the year, when a new council is set, to bring something back.
I have to admit, I don't, with the weather changes and the way things have been going, I doubt anybody's in a big hurry. But again, it could fail now, and we can try it after the first of the year. Something could happen between the first reading and second reading, and we could look at it again there, too. Does anybody else have any strong feelings about one way or the other, whether to proceed on a vote on this one or not?
I just say, Your Honor, I think this is probably going to pass strongly, for one thing, and I think it was the intention of everybody that something else would be coming back. I think it was reasonable due diligence that we did to make sure we were passing what we wanted to pass, and I think I'd let this one go. Just a comment for the public is your garbage service is not changing with this passing. The only thing is there may be another hauler that offers curbside pickup. The dates for those will all be synchronized have not been established yet, so nothing's changing. The garbage can still be placed by your house, it will get picked up by your same hauler, so there's no worries there.
Anybody else who wants to come out on this one?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
I agree with Jeff. To me, the verbiage may not be that, that big in it, but it does make some pretty good changes in it. And I think it was everyone's intent for this to come back and finalize form after you kind of nitpitted through after what we nickpicked on, so that we could get this done yet.
Anybody else? My thought is, too, if it passed, and we have a newly constituted council, it could be revisited after the first of the year as well. I will tell, we came back on Saturday night from our five-day trip to Austin, Texas for a house down there. They, every single place is automatically picked up at curbside, and man, alive is it fast. But all those toters are out. They're all out on the same day in the same neighborhood, so you know they're coming. It would be nice if someday we had something like that going here. I'll quit editorializing because I need to get on the road. Any public comment? Anybody else up here want to speak?
I do have a couple, if we are moving forward with this, Your Honor, I have a couple of questions after everybody else had a chance.
If nobody else up here has any questions, it's your turn.
Your Honor.
Yep.
Just quickly, it failed 4-3, and then it was universal 7-0 to bring back any revised amendments to it. So it didn't fail 7-0. So just want to make that clarification.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm reading the minutes right now.[1788.82] I'm reading the minutes right now.
And we told to bring it back with changes.
That was the 7-0 vote that Barry is mentioning. The original ordinance failed 3-4, but then we gave direction to come back with the revisions after the following discussion, which passed 7-0. That's what Barry's saying.
Anybody else up here? Otherwise, back to you, Gary.
Two things in this ordinance. If I have a toter, and I put a white, the toter's full, and I put a garbage bag next to it, there's a fine in here for the hauler if he picks up that bag next to the toter, if I read that right. And also, yeah, anything outside of the containers, the approved containers cannot be picked up. And the other, the other one is, God, I just lost it. Oh. The other one is, are we going to stop the one hauler from using his pickup trucks? As it says in this ordinance, they cannot use pickup trucks?
So to answer those two questions, the very first one that you mentioned, I don't recall any fine being automatic, automatically given to haulers for picking up a trash bag outside of a toter. You are correct that it is prohibited. It must be inside of a receptacle. And I suppose that's going to be some discretion on whether or not it gets enforced at that point, depending on the severity of it. And then the second one. Go ahead and repeat that, please.
The pickup trucks?
So the language in here is that a pickup truck cannot be used as your standard operating means of picking up garbage. There are situations when a pickup truck is allowed. If it got missed, or something like that, or it's a one-time pickup, they do have that option. So if there is a hauler that is only using a pickup truck, that is prohibited by the hauler license.
But then have the haulers had any objections to that? Because isn't the pickup truck used for the recycling?
I think there's a pickup truck that's used for garbage at certain times as well. Like I said, if a receptacle gets missed, if there's a truck breakdown, there's some special circumstances when a pickup truck would be used for garbage as well.
Your Honor.
Yep.
And this was discussed in the meeting we had with the haulers that Counselor Thompson was a part of. I forget the language, but the carrier did say, the pickup truck that was being used, there was some modification done, and I don't know if that's EPA-related or what. It's not a compactor, but I presume so it wasn't to spill. I forget exactly how they described it, but there was a modification done to their pickup truck.
Other council comments or questions? Public comment? Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Wadihoff.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Hoop. Isom.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Okay. That carried. Thanks for the committee that worked on that, and the members of the public that were part of that as well. On to the next item. Is a discussion item, and the first one is a request for proposal for vehicle chassis purchase.
David Reardon, Marshalltown Fire Department. So like the police department and Public Works, vehicle issues. We came, or back in May, we had discussion about changing the purchasing policies that would allow us to order a vehicle now, but not take delivery and pay for it until the fiscal year that it was designated for. Since then, I've learned that some of the outfitters, and those are the companies that are making like ambulances and like the rescue vehicle like we're getting to replace, they're having trouble getting chassis from the manufacturers. The manufacturers are selling them to the dealerships, because now some of the dealerships are doing some of the upfitting of vehicles, so like tow trucks and, you know, work trucks and those types of things. So it was suggested that we try to purchase our own chassis to provide to the outfitter to do the actual conversion. Even, even doing that, even if we can find a chassis, we're still looking at 20 months to get, to get a vehicle, and that's if we can find a chassis. So that still puts us in the 2026 CIP year, which is the year that it's designated for purchase. So I would like to go ahead and bid, put a bid out for a chassis to see if we can even find one. And then if that was the case, then come back with a resolution to, for approval to purchase. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any?
You know, the police department, how many times, Mike, did you have orders canceled?
At least twice.
Yeah, and I know Public Works has had vehicles that they weren't, well, what's happening is, is they'll take the order, but then they won't, they won't give the outfitter a VIN number. And when they don't do that, then they can just cancel the order for no, you know, for whatever reason they deem fit to do it. So if everybody's good with it, I'll, I'll get a bid out, and we'll see what we can find.
Get the impression up here from nodding of heads that that is the case. Anybody in the public want to address that? I'd say there is a consensus to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Next and last item is the Brownfield update.
All right, a couple of things here on a couple of grants. And while we're going to, Hector's going to put up a presentation, but I promise we're not going to go through all of it, Mr. Mayor, so that you can believe. But we have two, two grants we're calling Brownfield Grants. The first one's a community-wide assistance grant, a typical, what I call a typical three-year grant. We're in year two of that. So so far, we had a budget with the Impact 7G to do this work for us. The contract for $278,500, so far, only about 100 of that, 105,000 of that's remaining. So, so over $200,000 spent on that, so we're doing fine on that. To date, and this is to complete Phase 1 and Phase 2, so really examining what's there and starting to look at what needs to happen. It's not actually completing that work. But 13 Phase Ones have been completed of those. 13, seven have been through the Phase 2. What happens with these, a lot of times, several properties are looked at, and they're either deemed not eligible or for different reasons not proceeding. There's been 10 of those. There's about 10 or 12 more under review. I think by the time we see the next quarterly report, we'll see some of those move to the not proceeding category, too. But I think there's more than enough pending right now. Getting the approvals has taken some time from the EPA, so I think we'll, we'll see several of those come back, and we'll have plenty of work for the last year. So that's the first one. The second one we're calling a Brownfield Grant was really, it's a regionally directed technical assistance grant from the EPA administered through the Brownfield Office. And that's, Hector's going to put that study up. It's fairly lengthy. But what it does is it looked at two sites downtown. Talk about Site 1 is at Main and First Street. Site 2 is at Main and Center Street. So we know where those are. We've seen them. But this study you'll see, and this is in your packet, and also available on our Agenda Center to the public, but it's 20 pages. And it went through a market analysis a little bit of what are we needing, what are we looking for? And when they talk about retail and that sort of stuff and shopping, they call it leakage. So how much money is leaking out of your city and going into other areas? So one of the interesting things, it's on, I think, page 11 and 12, starts to look at what that leakage is and the gaps, I guess, the leakage a little bit. But some of the things that it's talking about, the big gaps, is what they call miscellaneous store retailers, general merchandise stores, clothing, which I hear a lot of, food and drink and furnishings, were some of those that the, the study shows that we could support. A couple more in the miscellaneous, a couple more in the general merchandise. And so the moral to that story, to me, is that there's, there's plenty of opportunity to use these, these sites downtown for retail and services. And then when they talk about services, they noted several things that we could have several additions, daycares, chiropractors, therapists, physicians, and home health care services, and legal services were the things they noted that we could have. An interesting thing, they, according to the study, we have an oversupply of dentist, nursing, and residential care, and credit remediation types of stores. So that was just kind of an interesting thing. So Section 2 goes through how the market analysis was, and I'm not going to bore you with that. But it does show that there's an opportunity for leakage. So then Section 3 is the recommendations, and it talks about the highest things there. And of course, clothing makes its way to the top of that one. I've mentioned, and it gives a little bit of description of what does a miscellaneous store mean, what does general merchandise, and those types of things. So it gives a good little list of some of the priorities for that. And then the next steps is Section 4. And on page 19, the first thing it says is business attraction and retention. So really, what I'm looking for tonight is, are you, as a council, okay with us marketing those? The chamber's prepared to start doing that. There would be some signs put up that says these, these lots are available. To really just start putting out there, what are the feelers? And do we need to come back with some proposals to you? Are there some offers? And they'd want to come back and discuss. But I think right now, what we're looking for is, are you comfortable marketing those? Using this study is kind of our basis for that. And the last thing on, on the Section 4 is it shows a couple of just what buildings on those sites could look like. And if, if you ask me, it kind of goes back to downtown was for service and retail, and this is what it looks like could be coming back. So any questions or comments? That was a fast fly-through of a 20-page study. But if you have any questions, we'll take those now.
Your Honor, I have a question, please.
You may.
Joe, are we marketing the two lots we own? Are we marketing all four lots, and we don't own two of them, on the Site 1?
So on Site 1, we own two. The chamber owns another one, and then the fourth one is privately owned. If you look at the picture, it actually shows that one kind of like an alley. So one of the things we'll do in marketing this is have a discussion, is if the owner interested in selling that for use, or do they want to do something else? But we'll start with what we're doing is the main three, but definitely the fourth one's open, if the owner's open to that.
Anyone else?
I def, Your Honor, if I may.
You may.
I definitely think we ought to be marketing these. I think we ought to have signage on them. If someone is coming through, they don't even know if they're for sale. And guidance as far as who to get a hold of, that type of thing, would be a good first step, getting going with it.
Anyone else? I finished a book over the last week called Your City is Sick by Jeff Sigler, and it was a real eye-opener about how cities 80, 100 years ago were centered downtown. You could walk downtown. You could get your groceries downtown. You could buy your clothes downtown, and how that focus was so good. And cities that now people flock to, like Paris, still have that going on. But the urbanization back in the 60s and 70s where we built the malls, and we had urban spread, and we got too far away, and everybody had to drive an automobile, turned our cities into kind of a different person. It was just a fascinating book. I was trying to look up, see how much Amazon charges for it, and I'm happy, oh, it's paperback for 20 bucks. I've asked Sharon to read it next, but then we'll have it available if anybody wants to read it. But it was kind of eye-opening in that way. I don't like the title, and I was embarrassed to be reading it as the mayor on an airplane, you know, but, but it had some good points in it, truly. Other comments up here, or if not, we'll open it up to the public? Okay. Well, thanks for the presentation. We, you know, we did have the full report here. It's kind of fun to look at the pictures and what could we put downtown. Oh, it'd be nice to get some more retail down there. I was surprised there aren't more lawyers. I was surprised there, we weren't in that category of having too many of us. Although we've lost quite a few lately.
Does staff have direction? I guess, or what direction are you looking for coming out of this? Because there wasn't much discussion.
I think just knowing that the consensus here is to market those for, according to the study.
Sounds good.
I'm seeing heads shaking. Yes, let's do it. It reminds me of when we got the housing study. The Marshall County Area Partnership that was over the Chamber of Commerce said, we know that anecdotally, we have housing shortages, but we need a study to show the developers. They did the study. I can't remember, 10,000 or 15,000 bucks or something like that, identified it very well, got developers in town, and now we're having more building permits than we've ever had.
Exactly. And you mentioned a housing study. Most granting agencies require one of those be done within five years. So the same thing here, developers, financiers, they're going to be looking for that. So this will be a very helpful tool. So yes, with those head nods, we'll move forward.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Your Honor, may I clarify something from earlier before we adjourn?
You sure may.
Okay. I just want to, or asking to legal to look at this, just so we know that there's enough changes, that it's a substantial change. I just, I wanted to do what our council manual says. So do I need to make a motion to ask for that, or can we just, okay, all right. Thank you, Your Honor.
Your Honor, I guess just comment on that. Two sections are different than the original proposal as proposed, 50.27 and 50.21, based off of how it was presented originally. So I think the direction's already there, but I guess do whatever due diligence needed. But those are both different as presented tonight. I don't know what other clarifications needed. Thanks.
With that, we are out of discussion items, and let's adjourn the meeting at 6:25. Thanks for streamlining it tonight.